Thank you. Let's begin the evening with a moment of silence and reflection, please. Alrighty, thank you very, very much. For those of you that may not be familiar with the way we do things here, at the back, my left corner, in the back is a copy of the agenda and supporting documents. If you will, make yourself at home and sort through whatever you need. If you are unable to hear tonight, if you'll raise your hand and do this, let me know that you cannot hear, and we'll check our microphones and do a better job of speaking into the microphones. And thank you all for being here. Item number three on the agenda is pledge allegiance to the flag. To my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Number four, consideration of approving the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, there's an item that we need to probably push until next month. Item 11, Mr. McEwen is not going to be able to join us tonight. And although the American Flood Coalition is probably a good organization to belong to, I don't know enough about it to recommend adopting the resolution, so he can come next month.
Alright. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Move.
All in favor say aye. Opposed say no. The amended agenda is approved, and that is eliminating item number 11 on the agenda. Minutes of the January 17 meeting, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written for the January 17 regular meeting.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Unanimously approved. Number six, public comments on agenda items only. Later on in the meeting, you'll have an opportunity to speak to anything that you would like to speak about, but right now it's agenda items only, and we have one person signed up, Mr. Jim Bauer. If you'll come to the microphone, give us your name and speak to items number 11, 14, and 16. Number 11 has been removed from the agenda, so we'll omit that. So if you will speak to number 14 and number 16.
Jim Bauer, 329 Ocean Boulevard West. Item 14 on the pier property. It's been over a year now. We still haven't heard anything about the insurance costs involved with keeping this pier open and letting the public actually onto it. It's been closed. I think that as you go forward, I would also like you to, as I say most of the time, if we can also think about the ability to tear the pier down, what that would save the town and cause a possible liability down the road could be worth millions. 796 OBW, item 16, once again, with what you're speaking about taking a dilapidated building and somehow fixing it up to sell it in the future, if anybody watches property values around, and I'm sure some do, the Kay Schiller real estate has taken its first dip in years. It would be a fantastic idea and a fantastic opportunity to sell that property. You would not only get the proceeds from the sale, you would get the tax revenue, you would have no town liability. And with all of these things, with the pier property and with all of the public property that's being talked about, whether you're disposing of it, making additions to it, or somehow fixing it up, it should always be done with public notice and comment and hearing, which is required by the United States and the North Carolina constitutions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Police report, Chief Dixon.
Hope everyone's doing okay this evening?
Yes, sir.
Not much to report on our end. We'll go over some of the numbers and tell you, during the budgeting process last year, we've got approved and purchased some recording equipment that was required for interview processes upstairs. Some of that was backordered. I've kind of updated you on anyway. That came in, we've gotten that installed, so all of our recording equipment upstairs is up and running, and everything's working like it's supposed to. Other than that, the numbers there, February, we're clicking along, getting ready for the summer season. We've started doing our in-service training and trying to get that knocked out early in the year. And then one thing I added to the back of that police reports was just kind of a year end summary. I just took everything from last year and crunched it all together in one little print out there. It's nothing official, but it just kind of gives you an idea. Total calls for service last year was 6,600. Then you got your parking complaints there, and just kind of broke down some of those. It's not an all-inclusive list by any means, it's just kind of a thousand-foot view of kind of what we did last year. So if you have any questions on it, I'll be glad to try to answer them if I can, and if not, I can get you the right answers and bring them back to you.
Commissioner, do you have any questions?
No, I'd just like to comment, Jeremy. We had breakfast with the Deputy Chief of the Brunswick County Sheriff's Department today, and he spoke of you very highly, as well as our department, and we appreciate y'all working with them as well as you do.
Thank you. We got a good working relationship with them, and hope to keep it up.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thanks for all you do.
Good afternoon. Once again, we've been very busy over in the inspections department. We try to lay out and report, so it's pretty easy. I think one of the things to note this month is that we had, the amount of work that was done is estimated at a value increase in ad lib taxes and construction improvement of a little over $2 million, and that don't include the land values. Right now, we have new home permits that are active, we have 37. Other permits are 271. Permits that are issued for over $30,000, and they can be anywhere from $30,000 to over $100,000 or even more, depending on the structure value, there's 20 of those. We've got 18 that are waiting to be picked up, that have been reviewed and are sitting on the counter, and that's a total permits of 326. We have four that are in review right now. We have 11 that have been incomplete and sent back for more work. We have 13 zoning permits that have been issued, nine KAMA permits that have been issued, and we've actually had zero KAMA violations in the last month. That's a rare thing. We have had, we've issued three stop work orders, and this is a public, basically a public announcement from us, and we're open to get it into maybe on the blast. But this is the time of year when people start getting their homes ready for the rental season, and when they do so, that sometimes they get in a hurry, or sometimes they don't transition into the inspection department the way they should to get the right information. And currently, we have three stop work orders on houses, and this will increase. And what it amounts to is that if they get too far into their homes on remodels and repairs, especially if they're pre-firm, they can lose the structure itself. It cannot be emphasized how important it is to come to the inspection department and check with your inspection department to find out whether or not you're in violation of the NFIP or the building code when you start doing these improvements to your home for your rental season. What happens is, is they start the work. The other thing you need to do, even if it's minor, if you're adding decks, or if you're doing other things, if it's any type of improvement, and you had improvement last year, it is also imperative that you come check with us, because if that amount exceeds more than 50% in a two-year period under our NFIP, then you've actually placed yourself in the same position as those folks who tore their houses down too far before we can get to you. So it's important that you come. We now have enough personnel that we can sit down with you and have those conversations and maybe guide people through that process. We actually had someone today, who contacted me today, and they have an appointment. We encourage you to contact us, because in the past, we've seen families hurt, people lost their vacation homes, or had to give them up because they actually just went too far. The other thing that we've got going on is that, I know y'all are aware, everyone's aware of the inlet hazard situation, and we actually have several other items, like beach matting and vegetation issues. The CRC meets this week, it's at, what's it at?
Ocean Isle.
Ocean Isle. It starts at 9:00. I would encourage you to get there early if you're interested in any of these items, but the beach mat rules and regulations are on there for change. The inlet hazard area's got several changes, but those changes, as far as I can tell, actually benefit us. We get an increase in the footprint size that I think will be a plus in the future. But if there's any of those items that you're interested in, or if you're interested in talking on the expansion of the inlet hazard area, get there early, if anybody's interested in that. Other than that, we don't have anything, everything over in the inspection department seems to be going well with the staff. Carrie is slated to take her next exam, and she's slated to take her next class, hopefully in March.
Any questions, Commissioner? Thank you very much, sir. Number nine, Assistant Town Manager Ferguson. We have some special guests.
We do have some special guests. This is always an exciting time. Good evening, everybody. We're happy to have with us tonight two gentlemen who have completed their Eagle Scout projects. They completed those projects with the town. This is really a win-win situation. We started this relationship with the Boy Scout group several years ago, and I cannot remember any projects, even though they can ask us to contribute to the cost of the project, at this moment, I can't remember any that they've actually asked the town to contribute. So part of their process is to raise the funds themselves. So they inquired about projects the town might need, and Gunner Blake worked on the bottom part of our park course in Izayasus. Those timbers floated up on the boulevard. We got reimbursed by FEMA to put the timbers back, but those had to be painted, and so Gunner worked on that project. And then Erwin Chavez worked to do two of our little free libraries over in the park, because ours wasn't adequate enough that we had, we needed more space. So tonight, the town manager's going to present you guys with your certificates. If you'll go to the center and meet him, and then we'd like to ask the board to come behind them and take pictures after they receive their certificates. And while he's getting those ready, I'll also mention Brad in the back. Brad has been with these different Eagle Scouts through a lot of years, and as I understand it, he's coming to the end of his service with, he's taken his group that he had all the way through, and now he's going to turn over the reins for some other folks to start bringing their group through. So we appreciate all the work you've done with the town as well.
We appreciate you, y'all.[851.13][851.13](applause)
While we're seating ourselves again, if you have been a Boy Scout or a Girl Scout, raise your hand. How about that? Very good.[911.01][911.01](laughter) Alright, we're on number 10, I believe, and you're up, Mr. Clemmons.
At the January board meeting, the town selected Green Engineering for engineering services relating to water system inventory and assessment. Green Engineering has provided the proposal for services for the board's consideration in response to the selection. The total cost for the agreement is $172,680. In order to approve this agreement, the board would need to approve a budget amendment, transferring $44,714 from the CRF, which is capital reserve fund, $50,860 from the contracted services, and $34,606 from the equipment purchase order. The water CRF is funded by system facilities meant to reduce the cost incurred for water system expansion. These transfers, along with the current $42,500 in professional services line, are necessary to execute the agreement. And we're asking consideration for approval. Copy of this contract from page 21 through 24, 22 through 24, for review, if you'd like to look it over. It's actually got scope of work with a price tag on each one of those elements, that contract.
Any questions from the commissioners? Is there a motion? Judge, is there a second?
And if you have any questions that you want to ask, I'll try to answer them. Green Engineering's here to be glad to assist you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
If I could, if I could add that, the motion, the consideration of the contract needs to include a reference to the federal contracting laws, CFR 200 Appendix 2 specifically, so that if there's any federal money involved in it, we can ensure that we're doing it according to the Uniform Contracting Code.
Judge, do you agree? Seconding party, Brian, you agree? Everybody understand the motion? Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed say no. It's unanimously approved. Thank you, Mr. Clemmons.
Thank you.
You probably should act on the budget amendment, too.
Alright, is there a motion to act on the budget amendment? Motion. You got a second, Judge? Brian made it, and Judge second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed say no. It passes unanimously. Mr. Hewitt, you're up for number 12, I believe. Fire Department.
Yes, sir. This is follow-up information resulting from the board's ask last week of the fire department to get an idea of the locations that the fire station on Holden Beach where it could be located. Chief Todd's here and can address the information that's provided in your package.
I think he's here. While we're done, we worked with GIS for the county and came up with the mileage from the east end of the island, which is the slide that's up on the television now, that somewhere close to the 800 block, is the furthest you can go and stay within five miles of the east end. And then the other one comes back five miles from the west end, and is somewhere close to Fable Street, to where, so you can be anywhere in between that parameter with a fire station, and still cover the whole island plus cover DOC property. And what it does not allow you to cover is the property that's going in and out on Turkey Drive. But, I mean, you can go further west, but if you go further west, then the station that we have on the mainland is going to have to cover part of the island if you're going to put you on the 800 block. Just by staying in that parameter, it gives you cover, so for any reason y'all decide not to contract with the fire department anymore, you would still be able to cover the island if you decided to start your own fire department.
Alright, what was that 800 number?
It's right at 800 block.
800 is the number.
800 is the number.
Fable Street to 800, OBW.
Yeah, Fable Street to 800 block, the beginning of the 800 block. Anywhere in that parameter, you can put a fire station.
So the fire station where it's at right now is about in the middle of there, correct?
That's correct. It's in the middle, that's the reason it was put where it was at. It was four miles from, at the time, a road mile from any end of the island. So right now, you could go back in that same spot, it's not going to hurt anything. You got to stay somewhere in that parameter. When that fire station was put in place, you could only go four miles from the fire station and be covered by insurance purposes. Now they've upped it to five miles, so that gives us a little bit of leeway that we can move in that direction.
You just stay where it's at.
There's nowhere to move it.
Okay.
Thank you for the information, yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead, question?
So with the, if we kept with the current location, what are we looking at as far as the safety of the equipment with flooding?
That's something that can be looked in. You may could go there, and if you rebuild the building and put block walls up enough, then it would help hold some of the water out. The biggest problem is trucks are getting longer and bigger, so the length of the building, you never get a ladder truck in where the building's like that right now, unless they make a lot shorter burden. At some point, if a ladder truck was ever needed actually to be on the island, that's going to be a problem. They're about 42, 43 foot long, somewhere in that neighborhood. That's only drawback with where it's currently located. Where the building could be oriented a different direction and make it up, I don't know.
We could turn it to come out.
Come out, I don't know if that would make a difference or not. That's something we'd have to look into.
Would you still, if you turned the building and dug, would you still have to have that stadium area out front? Because I know y'all stayed sometimes out in front.
You need enough room that they can pull the trucks out and wash them, or have somewhere they can pull the truck to wash it. You know, when we drive them into saltwater and stuff, we try to come back and wash them real good, to try to keep as much of that salt off of them as possible.
So do we know, I don't know, do we know, or do we have some idea what the length of that ladder truck would be, what stadium area would be?
I can get that for you.
And we can look at that site and see if we can reorient the building to make it work there.
I think it's going to be tight either way you turn it, because it's pretty much a square, square lots, the two lots.
But we don't have anywhere to put in that location, to put in.
But we could, I mean, I think if we had that, and then we take a look at some other stuff, because there may be some things that we can do to get some work through it, but I think that would need to be still considered to go make a mistake when I haven't talked about it.
I mean, right now, when we're putting the trucks out in the apron, you've got very little room left between them and the building and the street.
And I've always been concerned about leaving that street instead of, I mean, going directly out on OBW, I've always thought that was an issue. You've got two turns coming out of that. I always thought it should have been working the other way.
And it always works me, especially in the summertime, it's not, you've got the bicycle lanes, then you got to worry about bicycle lane, somebody coming down there with a bicycle, and even now on the sidewalk, you know, it's always a danger when you're making two turns to try to get out in the street, being able to see you got somebody coming down the sidewalk.
I've seen y'all truck, looking truck, too.
It's tight.
Any more questions? While that was a brief discussion, would you take one minute and give us an update on the mainland?
The main?
Construction, yes, sir.
We put it out for bid, it came back at 5.7 million, which was lower than about 1.2 million higher than what the architect told us it probably was going to be, and then with interest rates going up, so the board decided to put it on hold to see if the cost of some stuff would come down. We just didn't have, we could have made it work, but we'd have been pitching petty so tight that we wouldn't have been able to look at doing anything with any equipment or anything anytime soon. They kind of put it on hold to see if things would kind of level out a little bit.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Todd. Number 13, Mr. Hewitt, Block Q.
I just need to call Mr. Baker in, just to board with that, because he can't be here, but I just need to dial him.
Can you get him, stick the microphone down there so we can make sure to hear him.
Ellen?
Oh.
Hey, Randy.
I'm here, is that okay?
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Hey, Randy, this is David. We've
Yes, Dave.
We've got the site plan, the final draft site plan up on the screen for you.
Perfect.
Everybody's here, and I'll just turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to apologize. I've had a couple of bid openings today, and I just did not get back in time in order to be with you guys in person, but thank you for letting me do this via phone. What you see is a revised parking layout, Block Q, and we have turned the boat parking around so that it's easily accessible to the boat ramp as you let your boat off and pull straight into that area. We've also got perimeter parking around the site, and we left a majority of this Block Q open as open area. Then on the left-hand side, you guys see that we've got the bathroom facility with a little bit of parking around it. And what we had planned on is, you know, when we spoke the last time I was there, is doing, if this is an approved layout, we'll break this thing up into two phases. First phase being the parking area, basically the boat parking area, and then the second phase being the bathroom toilet facility there on the left-hand side. Does anyone have any questions on the present layout that you see?
I do. It's Alan Holden.
Yes.
I spent many years on the professional SKA circuit, pulling a 38 Fountain boat up and down I-95, and have a pretty good understanding of what it takes to park a trailer and a boat. My concern is, have you done a radius check? If I had my 38-foot boat behind a standard pickup truck, and I came out of the boat ramp and went south, and then I wanted to make the left turn to go down south shore, and I wanted to park my truck and trailer in the northernmost parking spot, or maybe even the second or third one?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure that the radius, turning radius there, if somebody else was already in the spot south of me, I'm not sure that I can make the turn.
Right, I'm with you. And those radiuses, because I am with you, I've got a 31 Fountain. I know exactly where you're coming from.
Alright, now here's
So with that, with those radiuses that we've got, it doesn't look like right now that there is a lot of area, but when we start actually laying this out and designing and actually putting pen to paper, this right here is just a typical overall layout of how these spaces would turn out. Yes, we would make sure that the radius would work for a, actually a 40-foot boat.
I'd like to make a suggestion for consideration.
Yes, sir.
The northwest corner of that boat parking area, as you have it drawn?
Right.
If you were to move that northwest corner of that parking area for the trailers, if you were to move that south, and therefore reduce that angle of those parking areas?
Sure.
And then you could recapture your green area And then you could recapture your green area on the north, of the newly created north area. So, your lot coverage would be the same. It's just your angle of approach to the parking bays would be improved.
Would be steeper. Right. I'm with you.
Okay.
No, yeah, and we will, yes, we will of course check those radiuses.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else got any question?
Yes, I do. Um, so.
Dr. Dyer?
Yes, so going with the mayor, um, when we had talked about this earlier in that section, we had about twenty-two boat trailer parking going at that angle.
Standing.
And then when we added those seven and eight spaces at that corner of South Shore and Quentin, that took away back down to fifteen. So, in talking with that angle of that corner, I think, is, is it possible to take those seven and eight spaces out and get back to the original that we had of the twenty boat trailer, boat spots?
Well, what we, what you do not see here, that we've got to take in consideration, is storm water detention.
Mm-hmm.
And that area right there in the corner is basically left for that. Now, uh, I spoke to my civil engineer today and depending on what we have to do, uh, with storm detention, you know, we could possibly, we could possibly move into that area and reverse the, you know, the storm detention on your left-hand side closer to, you know, that little, the ramp area, if you will.
Right.
Uh, so we could possibly do something like that. When you start making the angle that, uh, Mayor Holden was talking about, you're going to eat up some of that green space there.
Okay. I think we need to maximize the boat and trailer parking, even if we have to lose those few car spaces. And I, I think the, that, that'll include that eight spaces there. But on Quentin Street, the thirteen spaces and the eight spaces, I think you should eliminate, my personal opinion, which I'm just giving my opinion, is eliminate those car parking there because that's a residential street with those homes. And I just don't think that it's necessary. I think that should be kept green or to, to maximize the boat parking just because of that being more residential and leave those other spaces on the sides that don't have as many residential homes.
Sure, we can do that. Absolutely.
Unless anybody else disagrees with it?
I, I don't think it hurts to have it in the plan. A decision can be made later not to do it. But to have it in the plan as a maximum, um, just, it, it's, it's sort of the, this was what was, would be what we would do if we needed to go this far.
Now, just to let you guys know, our plan is to do a storm water detention plan as where this whole area is a parking area. That's what we want to design for.
Right.
It won't be that way in the beginning. It'll be mostly green space. But it will be designed so that we can add parking later on to this, uh, location.
Thank you.
Randy, it's, excuse me, it's Brian Murdock.
Yes, sir.
One concern that I see and another commissioner's brought it up also is the entrance to the boat trailer parking is coming out in front of a single residential property?
Right.
Like directly in front of a house?
Mm-hmm.
Would there be any way to reconfigure it a little bit to come out where it would come out, say, on Carolina Avenue, um, instead of in front of that, that single family?
Right. You could. The only thing, when you do that, uh, your angle on your parking spaces are gonna get very steep. We can, we can try that. It's just making those turning radiuses, just like, uh, Mayor Holden was talking about. We will look at that when we actually put this down on our CAD file, if you will, and try to get it out in front of the house. As you, um, you guys, the last layout that we had where the boats were coming, um, off of Brunswick Avenue and coming down and parking through that, you know, with that, we didn't have any lights or anything coming out, you know, at, uh, the residential spaces. But this area, we will probably have, you know, one of the mentioned was having lights, you know, especially in the morning, shining in the residence. But it's so far away, I don't think that's gonna be a deterrent, if you will. But yes, we will try to work that driveway down as far as we can do, uh, to, to the Carolina drive.
I think it makes.
But, um.
This is Rick Smith. Uh, I think that making that turn out of that parking area back onto Quentin Street, would make it a lot easier if we had that roadway to use a little bit of it making the turn versus somebody's front yard.
Right.
I, I just feel like it's inevitable that, that, that yard will get used by somebody that can't park a boat in a trailer, so to speak. I mean, I.
And what we will probably do to allow, uh, the radiuses, we will come in on Block Q so that we're not actually into that space. We're gonna have to add space back to Block Q so that we've got enough turning radiuses to make all these. So, you will, you know, we'll have to come back into that site and take up that site as opposed to, you know, people turning into people's driveways, that type of stuff.
That's all I've got. I'm glad I'm not in your position.
Well, I, I, again, I've got a, a couple of more questions. Uh, what are, what are the next steps?
Um, guys, if you guys, in general, this layout is basically what you're looking for. Um, what I will do is, I've talked to my civil engineer today and, uh, for permitting, we have to go through storm water, which I know we will. As far as, um, you know, cutting off the road, since it's, you know, your town road, I don't think that's gonna be any issues. We don't have to go to, uh, N C D O T. Uh, but getting storm water permits, erosion control permits, that will take about three months to get those permits.
Well, I asked, my next question was the timelines and you answered that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, what, if you guys are, in general, good with this overall layout, Phase One being the boat parking area, uh, if you guys would approve that, we will start the design as soon, I mean, probably as soon as next week, if that's, uh, amenable to you guys.
Once, once you start with the, developing the drawings and the designs, that's when you'll go and start looking for the permit approvals?
That is correct. Yes, sir. What we've gotta do, I've gotta get this plan, uh, to, uh, to our engineer. And, uh, then we'll start laying out the turning radiuses, all this stuff, and actually putting it into a CAD. It won't be a beautiful picture, but it will be an actual design layout for all the storm water, the planning, it be, and then we will leave a space for Phase Two for our bath area, toilet area for a Phase Two, which will be later on, whenever you guys are ready to start that process.
Ms. Ferguson, you had a question?
Yes, sir. Hey, Mr. Baker, I've got a question that's relevant to the, uh, next action item for the board. Can you confirm that the perimeter parking that's on your schematic, um, that's gonna be single car parking in the right of way, that that is intended to be left natural and will not be any type of impervious surface? Or is that not correct?
That, that, no, you are absolutely correct. That will be left natural, just like it is basically now. We've shown those spaces just for graphical, you know, um, denote. Yes, but it will be left natural. It will not be asphalt or, um, T O papers, anything like that, so.
Okay. Any more questions? Mr. Hewitt, you got anything?
Contractual wise, I think that, um, if the board approves this conceptual plan, that we're probably in the next phase of a contract. I'm not, um, I'm not sure of that. Christie, do you know? I think that we had selected, but then we'll need to update the contract to reflect design and, and, uh, and also to fund that.
That sounds correct to me, based on the previous.
So, we need to make a, a motion. I'll make a motion. We have the town manager execute the contract for the next phase. And, uh, also, uh, do, or the, if we have any that are available, maybe, uh, have the assistant town manager pursue any grant opportunities.
Um, can I ask you to break that into two motions?
All right. Our first motion is to have the town manager, manager execute the contract for the next phase of Block Q.
Looking for a second.
Just if, if I, if I could note, that, um, I'm, I'm not aware if we've got funds available to do that.
That's right.
Um, I don't know if, Daniel, do you remember if there's, there, there hadn't been an appropriation to do that yet?
I don't think there has. I think it's just the initial.
Okay.
You'll withdraw your motion until we find out we got money?
Well, I'm, I'm just kinda, I'm just kinda leapfrogging, leapfrogging ahead that, um, you know, we got a, we got a meeting on March the thirteenth and we could take the budgetary thing to March the thirteenth. Um, and y'all could, y'all could make, make it contingent on approval of the budget actions at, on March the thirteenth.
May I make a change in my motion, please?
Can you read your motion?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to have the town manager execute the contract for the next phase contingent on budget, uh, budget requirements.
Jeff, do you agree with that? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. She unanimously approved. Okay, Ms. Ferguson, you sitting on go?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
What about the second portion? That's where she's going now?
Hello again. So, the pre-application cycle for the Public Beach and Coastal Waterfront Access Program is currently open. Um, staff has communicated with the district coordinator for that program. Typically, funding ranges in the two hundred thousand to two hundred fifty thousand dollar range. However, I have encouragement that this grant cycle may have more funding. Um, so what we are asking tonight is direction on if you guys want to pursue any grant funding for Block Q. When your memo went out, I explained in it that you would not be able to start any construction until after you had a grant contract in hand. And if we base that on the same time cycles that we've seen with our Hatteras ramp that's down at the pier, you guys, we sent that final application in in August. We found out that in November, December, that it was awarded and that should be before you to act. And I'm being told the next couple of days. So, it would be this time next year before you had a contract, which may not be on pace with what you're thinking with Block Q. Since the memo went out, I put a call in last week and had not get an answer back until yesterday. Um, and I asked if there was a way that the board might want to consider phasing it. So, if your, um, appeal for it was to move forward with boat parking, if you might want to consider biting off that chunk by yourself. And then the only thing the grant would go in for is the bathroom. Um, since parking will remain natural, we can't really count that. So, that's why I needed to know that, cause they're gonna wanna know things like parking spaces being provided. So, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five percent grant and it's really up to you how you want the staff to proceed if, if at all on this project because it's, do you wanna wait and put all the components in with the storm water and everything that goes with the boat parking and the bathrooms? And do it as one grant with the full amount? Or do you think that you're gonna wanna move forward with boat parking before then? You're willing to bite that off and you just wanna put in for a restroom? Either way, if you wanna go for, forward with a grant, that would come before you in March for action so that it could be in on time for April.
What is your recommendation?
I can only talk, okay, so Randy hasn't given us any numbers because that's not to the part that he's at yet. In communications with the town manager and, uh, the planning and inspections director, um, the cost estimates that were thrown around for full project is in the seven hundred thousand dollar range. So, if we were to apply for a maximum, I think that we could possibly get for them on the project is five hundred thousand. And that would be a reach for them, but we could put in and see what happens. They did offer that we could put in for the, that amount and that we could look to maybe whittle projects down. However, if you only go in for a bathroom, you've got nothing to whittle down. The bathroom cost itself, because of elevations, is looking like the numbers we threw around was three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars. And we kind of settled towards four hundred, cause that is the only estimate we have to go on is what was out here for this part before we went modular. So, it's really depending on how fast the board wants to move and how much you want to, again, you would probably, you would not hear anything until sometime between April and August, undetermined timeline. They would let us know whether we got through the pre-application phase, just like we did last year, and move to a final application for August.
Would the parking lot next to the bath house that's gonna be handicap accessible?
That would be included? That, yeah, but they're asking for things like total number of parking spaces and we would definitely not want to count. If you guys only decide you want to go for the bathroom component and the parking next to the bathroom, we would not, we would want to reflect in the application that the town is bearing the cost for the other and give a count, so they know total count there. And then we would want that to be indicated by counts too.
Okay.
Are there any conditions to this?
Yes, it's, um, twenty-five years. Everything I've seen is twenty-five years. Because it's a development, it's not land acquisition.
Any more questions? Mr. Hewitt, you got any suggestions?
We're just seeking guidance on, uh, um, if you, if you want to proceed with grant funding now, it would have to come back to you in, in the March timeframe before we jump down a rabbit hole. We're seeking guidance on if the board wants to proceed, uh, with grant funding for either the whole thing or just a piece of it, and that would be the bathrooms.
Randy's saying, you know, and Tim, you can probably fill in some blanks here, but you're talking three or four months at best before we could even get through permit to even start it. So, it doesn't look like it's gonna happen this season for the busiest portion of the season. So, I would be, I'd be hesitant for sure if it was not gonna happen even next season. So, I would, I wanna make sure that the boat and trailer parking, if it's not gonna be able to be put in place for this coming up season, that it would definitely be in place for the following season, which would be twenty-four. I wouldn't want the grant to hold that up, that portion of it up.
And I'm not.
If, I'm looking for like, um.
If we got the grant, so they're telling me, all I've gotta go on is you should get it in the next few days. So, I'm gonna pretend you guys get it mid-March. I'm gonna assume the timetable's gonna be the next time next year. I would assume that between March and the start of the season in May, that we wouldn't be able to turn that boat trailer parking around. So, I think that the answer in my mind is if you were to go forward with the full grant, that you would be two years out on your boat trailer parking. But you could, you could still just put in for the restroom and the parking next to the restroom if you want to pursue one. You would still be locked into the same stipulations.
It's still gonna be a budget matter, so it can't.
If you, if, if we put in for the restroom only, do you think that would hinder our chance of getting additional grant for the same location in the following year?
For this grant, I'm not sure that it would. I tried to fill out that question and what I got was that they would be more concerned, they would not, they would not be as excited about the boat trailer parking. They would not, they would not be as excited about the boat-trailer parking, even though that's very important to us. They're more concerned about what it provides access to the beach. So, they're more concerned with parking spaces and amenities. However, hearing that, that's why I asked one of those questions about the perimeter parking and what it was going to be, if it's going to be natural. I don't, I mean, we can turn in that count, but we'll need to make sure that they recognize from this plan that that's not going to be a actual space that's... So, I think it's not going to hurt you for this one. There are grants that would hurt you for, like the Parted Grant, they look for a certain number of recreational amenities.
Can you apply for the whole thing and drop a portion of it off later? Is that possible? Or is it, is that just...
Well, I would actually recommend against that, because then you won't be executing a program and you're, we want to make sure that whenever we get these grants, we execute them fully and articulate what the whole need is. The whole program's probably going to take two years, is what it is. And if there's a desire for the board to, you know, move forward with the parking spaces, it would seem to me that your best money is to just focus on the restroom, putting in for the restroom for the grant.
And the other part of the answer to your question, Brian, is I believe that it's about, don't quote me on this number, because I don't have it in front of me, but I believe total for everybody in North Carolina, there's only $3 million available. And if we were tying up and they thought we were going to use a larger chunk, and then we declined it because we dropped off part of the project, it hurts other communities that they couldn't have funded.
And it may leave a bad taste in their mouth for our next ask.
It was just a question, but I would, my opinion is that we really, if the budget, if our town budget allows what we need to move on with the boat and trailer parking, because it's what, the number one reason I feel like we bought the property for. And I think people are looking forward to that. So, I think if we can, it's still a question if we even have the money to do that, but I think if I was going to apply for the grant this time, I would leave that portion off and just apply for the bathrooms, like you said, like that portion of it, the second phase or whatever.
When we asked for the, for him to make us some drawings and start getting some sketches on the property itself, we asked him at that point to segment it, where we could start on one part and that we might possibly be able to budget somewhat. And I think that separating the two would probably be the best for us to move forward on a, that bigger piece of property right now is just Scott parking around the perimeter, which is not what we envisioned. So, I guess, do I need to make a motion that we ask the assistant town manager to pursue the grant opportunity on the restroom portion of Block Q?
Parking next to...
That handicap parking.
Yeah, the ADA parking and the ADA-approved restroom in the second segment of Block Q.
Second. A motion and a second.
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. She unanimously approves. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Turn to page number 14. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir. We've got Mr. Chip Hemingway here tonight to review the proposed final site plan for the pier property with the board. We have the diagrams up on the screen. And Chip, come on down.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is, I guess, the culmination of our, okay, culmination, you know, based on our last meetings and refining the master plan for the revitalization of the Holden Beach Pier. And just a quick summary, you know, we're talking about renovating the existing pier, renovating the existing pier house, and approving the existing parking lot. Last time I presented, I had drawn the camo line, or I had assumed the camo line to be in a different position than it actually is. And luckily, for the project, it's further ocean work than I was showing. And so, that's basically the biggest change on these drawings that I'm going to talk about from the last time. And so, just, so first of all, we have the survey, there's some survey here.
Green is forward and red is reverse.
I think it's because it's a PDF and not a PowerPoint. It's not, which one do you want?
Oh, sorry. The blue. So, again, the light, I'll just start from the ocean come in. The lighter portion of the pier is the existing pier that we try, we would try to renovate as it is. The structure of the pier itself, from my point of view, is in pretty good shape, straight as an arrow. The handrail, we're proposing that we would replace the handrails, replace the electrical, replace decking as needed, and return that portion of the pier to function and be open to the public. There's one dip right in there where the waves are shown in that drawing that we'd probably try to address as well. And then, as you come back on the beach, the pier, the condition of the pier is much less desirable than the ocean part of the pier. And we would have more significant repairs to that portion. First of all, all the way down the length of the pier, we would replace all the hardware that connects the structural room. We would replace certain cross beams that have cracked and are no longer functioning as designed to, which holds the pier together when challenged by a hurricane. And so, as we come back, we will begin to repair more and more of the handrail. There's a lot of things on the land side of the pier that need to be replaced. But then, as you get into that darker brown section, we're proposing that would be a completely new structure that would incorporate ADA-accessible ramps. So, the pier at this time is not ADA-accessible and could not open as a public facility, but, you know, it'd be the easiest part to rebuild and it's the part that needs to be rebuilt the boats. So, that is the pier.
Hey, Chip?
Yeah.
I'm a little colorblind.
Yeah.
Is, when you said the brown portion, is that really orange that's at the...
Yes, could be orange.
Okay, at the pier structure itself?
Yeah.
Okay. I got you.
Right here.
Okay.
This is the rebuild. And what we're proposing is when you come out of the pier house, we're going to set the doors back of the pier house in, so when you come out, you're not, you'll be protected by the weather, vice versa, when you come in. And then, the ADA ramp, we'll have a ramp that heads west and then back up to the pier. And then, we'll have a set of steps right there. And then, we'll continue ramping till we get up to this, this point right here where the pier is enlarged for some reason, I don't know what it was, in the past, it could have been spared access in the future. The bathroom? And so, then we, it's called new lighting, new electrical, if we need to create some fish cleaning stations out there, some new plumbing. And then, we would go into the pier, the existing pier house. And we, you know, our, we were asked to come up what might be the best use of this site, keeping the pier, keeping the pier house, and making the pier house rentable to one, two, and at this moment, we have, it could be three businesses. Ideally, it might be two, but, there's existing building. We came down, we measured the building, we drew it up, we measured the pier, we drew it up. Let's see, this drawing, this is the existing pier house, this is the parking lot up here, this is the ocean. And so, we were thinking that you come in, have a concessions space, is what it's called, but kind of be like a restaurant. And when I was talking about drawing the camo line before, the camo line is right here. So, what we would do is expand the restaurant area out, wood deck, that's engraved for additional seating, could be bench seating, could be determined later. And then, this space would have kind of a, all this, this is just conceptual at this point, schematic, so the kitchen, they changed a little bit, but we're thinking that you come up, you order, you pay, you sit down, have restrooms for the customers. And we would have, right here, one, two, three, four garage doors that could open up during summer and have this open-air dining facility, which would be great, I think. And it would be, we, I'll get to the drawing event, but we've got kind of a buffer here, so people here would not communicate with people going to, from the pier. And on this side, we have your traditional pier house, tackle shop, gift shop, whatever, whoever leases the space might turn it into. But at this point, you would sell tickets to people going out on the pier, whether you're fishing or walking out on the pier, whatever the price might be. You have a window here and then a large door that could open. And then, we showed up here what might be ice cream, coffee, any kind of secondary, secondary to this, food service or drink service. And in this portion here, which is part of, I think, the grant that they've received already, will be public restrooms for beach access. I'm sorry, we'll go back to that site plan. So, one of the major things I forgot to mention on the site plan is the hatteras ramp would be for panel vehicles and emergency vehicles to access the beach quickly, and also an ADA-accessible ramp for the public to get out to the beach strand as needed. And on this side of the building, we have these new public restrooms and public showers there for everyone, which, you know, greatly expands the opportunities for the community and for everyone who is young and beyond to enjoy this beach property and whole community. In this, we're talking about, you know, new actual, new HVAC, a new floor structure and the walls as they ultimately end up being designed. But this right here, we kind of got set. We will, but this will be up for discussion with David, this comes about what it might change into, if it changes to that. I think it's a pretty good solution to providing the, you know, opportunities for the community to enjoy the facility. Okay. So, where were you at? Okay. Let me see, I didn't remember where it seems that building stuck out. Let's see, I'll go back to my phone. It's not, yes, there, I was looking at the ice cream shop. Oh, yeah, yeah, it does do that. And that could be all one business, whole thing could be one business. But what we were thinking was that, sorry, one of these could be open, one could be closed, or they could both be closed, and the town could have free pier day, or, you know, people could access the pier at any time. And right now, from my point of view, the pier house seems, you'd never know there's a pier back there. So, we're trying to, we're going to put as many windows as in the same, and make this as all windows, so it'd be, you can look straight out onto the pier from the roof. So, we came down, we measured up the existing elevations, drew those up, and then we drew, and so, our condition here is renovating as quickly as possible. Place one of the things, and enhance all the things that aren't working, as reasonable. Same with the pier house, right? This is just a conceptual idea. I would not have developed a similar to what they are, but certainly be any problem. The one thing that I thought, well, so you can see how we've opened up the street side to see, and we haven't opened this up, because this is where the kitchen would be, and it's open to the beach. And it would be open from the side, so you'd see in there, there's one garage door through the other street. They could open up, and here's that kind of, a kind of lattice wall that we would separate the people enjoying the restaurant from the people that are going to the pier. And the one thing that struck me is when you turn around, rumping out of there, you can see right on the roof of the building, and, which is okay, but it would be easy and effective to add a trellis structure here, so instead of looking onto the roof and beyond, you're looking into this kind of structure that could be lit at night and would softly glow, make the pier much more welcoming, spot the families in the evenings. And you can see the two entrances to the public restrooms, and just you have lightly drawn in this ramp here. And, you know, keep the people off the pier at night, if it's ever closed, a lot of piers open '24, you know, that's kind of a system here that comes back, keeps people from easily climbing onto it at night, accessing it if exposed as it is. And let's see, so there's a pier we drew up for our structural engineer, he used his analysis, will continue to use as you develop and design, and then the existing pier itself. Let's see, I haven't forgotten anything? Well, our charge, first of all, was to come up with a master plan for the best use of the property, which we have done. Our second part, if they approve it, would be to more specifically design the facility and more specifically come up with the cost to rehab it.
If I still have a question I asked last time. Can we not move the emergency vehicle access as far west as possible rather than, right now, I just look at it as you've got a group of parking spaces that are kind of going to be to the west of vehicles if they're zooming through, and I just kind of feel that's, I don't know, a little uncomfortable. Does it not work to try to put that emergency access as far west on the property as possible?
Well, you would then eat into some of your existing parking.
Yeah, I understand that. I just, I'm kind of uncomfortable about that parking and vehicles going whiz and by. That's why I, it's just a mental image, okay? Yeah.
I'm going to assume that the vehicles entering this parking lot to then enter the beach strand would be going at a safe speed and be able to navigate cars in the parking lot before they start to traverse out to the ocean. Also, I think you're talking about a very low number of vehicles entering and exiting in the beach. But I think what I'd say is that if we move it as far as we can do right, and we dedicate a lane there for emergency vehicles, we can move those parking places the other way on the other side. I don't know, you might lose a few there out front. I think you would lose more than you could gain. But if parking spaces is not a premium, which... I don't know. That's for someone else to say other than me. I assume that they are a premium at this place, but we can certainly move it. I don't, it could be a problem that I can't...
It could be a problem that I can't foresee, but I foresee it as being okay. You know, an emergency vehicle, an emergency is going to have a siren on, its lights on. A car backing out is going to be like, whoa, wait, you know, yield to emergency vehicles. You could say that the people out there would be as equally endangered. But like in Ryswell Beach, we've designed an emergency vehicle access through a whole lot of parking and a whole lot of people. And, you know, there's no, they're always going so slow and carefully that it's never an issue that I'm worried. But if you want to move and lose parking spaces, I certainly can do that.
If I'm the only person with the concern, I'm the only person with the concern.
I, you know, I'm going to, we'll, as we continue on in the design, which was only evolved from here, we'll certainly look at that with our civil engineer.
Chief, as I ask about the block queue, my questions are the same. The next steps, the timelines, the, I guess you'll have to have the conceptual drawings and stuff to get permit approval and segment. Is it possible to segment some of this where we don't have to do it all at once?
So the next, so this defined what would be a potential scope of work. Our next step would be to come up, give you a proposal to design it, similar to block queue, to design it to a more, for construction documents for someone, a contractor to take it and build and also for permitting to take place. A timeline for that, I'm thinking we could get David the proposal in the next two to three weeks for what we perceive to be the scope of work and design for it and begin it anytime. The design process, I think, would take us through the summer, be ready to bid at August, start work September, November, when we're sure no more hurricanes are going to roll up here and be ready for the following summer. Whether it could be phased or not, I don't, you could potentially phase the pier. You could do the pier work and then maybe have some other kind of access point to get up on the pier if you wanted to let people go up there for free. But off the top of my head, that's the only way I can think of phasing it at the moment. You could certainly do the beach access ramp and the hatteras ramp. And ideally, the pier and the building would be done together, but if you need to separate one or the other. Or I guess conversely, you could renovate the building, just not let people go out on the pier. You could have a restaurant and tackle shop and then you could, the following year, go out on the pier. So that would just be however you wanted to handle that, we could do it either way. But those are the ways I think you could phase it, you know, off the top of my head.
David, this will also be under the restraints of our budget proposals for the following year.
Yeah, y'all will have to get a proposal from Chip back on doing the design specific that would be necessary in order to actually prepare a bid document. That's going to take him...
That's right.
It's going to take him through the summer to do that.
And we'd have civil engineer, architect, plumbing, mechanical, electrical engineer, and structural engineer involved in that. We could have interior design, but I don't know if you need it. Or the DC might provide their own outfit of these spaces, that's to be determined.
To move this forward, we need to ask David to get that information for us.
And I would ask Chip, like before, the board has a meeting on March the 13th. Would you be able to get a...
Yes.
A contract proposal? But now Heather's going to need it before then in order to get it out. But I'm assuming that you'd be able to get something that would, that potentially the board could act on, assuming that they approved the pier plan tonight.
Right, yeah, if this is approved and we could, I could then present this to my consultants for them to clearly see what their scope of work would be. We, I think we could quickly get it together before the 13th. Not promised, but I'm pretty sure, hope you can do that.
Yes, Krista.
Yes, ma'am.
Two comments on the discussion I heard. One goes back to Pat's comment and Tim's comment with the placement of the hatteras ramp. You were going to go back and look at that. When you're looking at that with your civil engineers, can you keep in mind that as part of that grant? My recollection is that we brought forward that there would be, I believe, two handicap parking spaces with that. There was some discussion. Pat asked if there could be more parking spaces than that. We put in the grant, the wording was that there would be as much as possible that we could place on there under the schematic. So when Tim, if you and Tim can talk about that, when your engineer's looking at it to make sure that the placement is so that we can have that occur.
We've got, the roof is there and I've, it kind of, out of fear of agreeing with Chip on it, we're going to have to have it placed on the left hand side because I included it in the grant.
Kristy, are those handicap parking spaces just for the hatteras ramp or would that include in front of the building as well?
Well, there are two existing in front of the building.
Uh huh.
We perceive those remaining. And then we would add at least two over here by the...
But as far as the grant goes, is it just counting the handicap bathrooms and parking spaces in front of the hatteras ramp or will it include all in that whole parking lot?
It was based on the lot because they gave us money based on the lot. It was based on the 50-foot lot.
So we need to maximize handicap for that area.
And the other comment that I had was you just, as you were giving options to the board, you talked about phasing and moving forward. And your comment was about if they wanted to move forward with the hatteras ramp and the walkway first. Really, I mean, I don't know how the other will come along finance-wise, but technically that's tied to the grant. And if they act on that grant when it comes through, they'll only have 18 months. So they're going to have to move along with that.
18 months to begin?
18 months completion.
So what's that?
For, for, I'm talking about for the hatteras ramp and walkway on the 50-foot lot only, not the whole project.
Yeah, so... That's phase one, sure.
Well, that brings, well, that brings me to a question. It looks like that you've incorporated the bathrooms into the handicap access walkway for walkway.
Right.
And so that would have to be, we would have to have that designed previous if we're going to stay on the timeline that we just talked about.
Those bathrooms are not part of the grant.
Okay, so if they're not part of the grant, then it's a mute point.
Yeah, so it sounds like with that information, you know, phasing would be hatteras ramp, the walkway. And if there was any delay or wait time for the other portions of the project, David, come second.
I don't want, but a delay of any kind, but I do have a few comments on the drawings I'd like to throw out there. I'm not asking for action or anything, I'm just bringing this to the attention so that I can feel better and say that I did say something about it. On page A3.1, the bathroom doors, that prevailing southwest wind and the view of looking into the bathrooms from the side. Can you address that with, on the walkway and all that? Is that going to be something you can look into if you're walking by or, you know, and the doors are open? And how's that relative to the pedestrian traffic going into those doors?
Well, we could certainly build a screen in front of them so that people that aren't right at the door aren't seeing in. They have to swing in or they won't, they won't swing in. And so that you can just freely go in and no one ever locks it, they're never locked when it's open.
Yep, that would be a code violation to have the doors open where you can see right in.
Well, that's what I wanted to address, but that's...
Yeah, but I don't, I think you're looking into seeing in the mirror. The rest, oddly, those sinks look just like a urinal. But those are the sinks in the mirror. And we drew a lot of them. And we talk a lot about obscuring the vision or making it so you can't see in.
Those southwest windy days are going to make it interesting in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so I understand that. And maybe a screen wall right in front of those doors would take care of both those concerns.
As long as it's big enough to make it continue to be ADA compliant.
Oh, yeah, right. So we'd have a five-foot turnaround right outside. A lattice wall could be, you know, mostly obscured but partially open so you can see that activity if you're apparent.
If you bear with me, I got a whisper, I'll try to go through it quickly. Same page. On the south side, ocean side, I would encourage the possibility of reducing that ground level glass. In previous storms, as owner of other properties, commercial properties that the ocean has visited during the storms to get that surge, it would be much better, in my opinion, rather than glass, to have a solid wall that lower half to help deflect that energy.
Yeah, you could do that.
And then the other thing is the heat going in there and the sunlight. Because you get the morning, the noon and afternoon sun, it'll help a lot on the utility bills to reduce that amount of glass. But they're there because they want to be on the ocean front, so you got to have the view.
Oh, yeah.
But maybe possibly cut that grass from south side in half.
Now, these three open.
Just to stop, about that, we would assume that they'd open those doors on the perfect days, perfect temperatures, which there are plenty like today. And then they could close and turn on the AC and the heat whenever desired.
And the health department's going to monitor your flies and other bugs in there when you open it, but that's another story.
Okay.
Where are the HVAC units going to be?
Well, they haven't been located yet, but I was thinking you could do some mini splits all throughout this thing and you could mount them right on the ceiling without any ductwork.
How about the outside here?
So...
What are you concerned about?
I have them, this time I'm drawing right here. And they would be elevated above flood and they would be screened.
I agree with you.
Okay.
On page A2.1, the location of that ice cream shop. I've owned businesses on the ocean front since the early 70s and worked in them in the 60s, so I've got pretty good experience on that. And I can tell you that the owner or operator of that ice cream shop is going to suffer greatly if you ask the public to walk in the door of the building and not be able to see the counter and so forth. Because you're asking, as I understand it, you're asking the public to go walking down a hall or some site and there's no immediate access where you're looking into that, right?
So right here, you could come in. This would be for staff only.
Okay.
So this would be staff for a restroom and storage. And these doors could be locked or they could, you know, some other barricade. Or they could be the same business.
Okay, here comes my point.
Okay.
Why do we have the janitorial closet and so forth in the prime center of the room? Why wouldn't we put that in this northwest corner? Top left.
Okay.
In other words, you've got your prime floor space being used by janitor's closet.
Well, that was really just a divider between the two businesses.
Okay.
Of course, we could open it up and let it be one business and, you know...
Ideally, if it were mine, I would, I would try to figure out how to locate those restrooms on the north side and have that whole room open so that whenever you're sitting in that ice cream shop, that you're sitting there looking at a big open room, like a great room.
Oh, I see, uh huh.
And looking out the windows at the ocean and the pier rather than a back corner.
Then it would be one business as opposed to two, that's what you're saying.
Yeah, but anyway.
Okay, sure, yeah.
And possibly you could put a glass wall divider in that room if you wanted to, but that's just simple discussion.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. That way, you're just, you're having as big and open space as you can as opposed to subdividing it the way I have it at the moment.
I don't want to waste any more time, but you've done a lot of good work on that. We've made progress, but I guess we can massage that as we go.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And it could be a situation where we put all the infrastructure into the building and whoever rents the space, they won't be able to fit it themselves.
Okay, anybody got any other comments or questions?
No, just David, what do we need to do to move this forward so we can get our information on the 13th?
I think that where you are is that if you're going to approve this concept, then you should act on it. And whatever deviations from this need to, Chip's got to have an understanding of what those are for this to be considered approved. I mean, there's been several iterations, but I don't know if, if in fact, I understand exactly what it'd look like if all of those were incorporated. Would the board want to see a final, final based on your discussions tonight? Or is this good enough to move forward with what your discussions have been? I mean, Chip, have you got, have you got enough to...
Yeah, I would consider the comments to be minor relative to the master plan of the site. Those conditions that we just discussed and more that will be discussed as we move forward are going to move and change and evolve and hopefully get better as we keep going. So in my mind, it's ready to be approved if you see so.
Mr. Evans, as far as moving forward, is there a problem if the perimeter walls of the building stay the same? Is there a problem having to add here or the ability to change the interior?
No, I've not heard anything that is an issue as far as that is concerned. I'd have said something if I did, but I haven't heard anything.
So really, there's no reason why I'm sitting there for it right now.
I'd like to make a motion then, or move forward with the Chip's plan and try to get the information we need by the 13th.
Second, any further discussion?
Kristy, did you have something that you wanted to add about additional funding? Or was that on the previous one?
I just needed either action tonight or action early March in order to, for the board to be able to capitalize on the most points available for a site plan on the part of application.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. You ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, it's unanimous. Thank you, thank you, sir.
We're looking forward to it.
Thank you, Chip. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Auto Connect has provided amendment to the paid parking program contract between them and us. The amendment reflects the change to the fee schedule and how parking violations for non-registered trailers are handled as requested by the board at the January meeting. Resolution 2303 is what amends the fee schedule. So if the board would like to move forward with the changes discussed, you would have to approve the contract amendment and resolution 2303.
Is there a motion?
I'd like a motion to approve Auto Connect's contract amendment number one and resolution... I'd like a motion to approve Auto Connect's contract amendment number one and resolution number twenty-three point three.
Looking for a second, second discussion. Anybody hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. It's unanimous?
Mr. Mayor, on a, on a dessert basis, I'd, I'd like to give the board a heads up. We, uh, the staff intends, since this does have a, a price differential from the existing fee schedule and, um, from the, in our current budget, it's probably going, we're probably, can forecast a revenue increase, and so it's the staff's intent at the regular march meeting to have run those numbers and to bring back, um, what we think we'll see, uh, in terms of revenue for at least May and June. We, we didn't do it earlier in the year last year, but we're gonna, uh, just wanna give y'all a heads up on that, to be, to be seeing it at regular march meeting.
Is there any reason why we can't move ahead with this motion?
Oh, no, sir, y'all have already approved it.
Okay.
I was just getting seconds on it.
Okay, all right, very good. All right. Where are we, sixteen? Ferguson.
Yes, sir, this one has a few layers, it might take us a few minutes. Um, so, at the direction of the board, the town manager was supposed to, um, get quotes from, um, contractors for external painting, carpentry, electrical, and mechanical repairs to seven ninety-six. Um, the request for proposals was issued. Three bids were received, ranging from forty thousand nine ninety to fifty-one thousand five two three eighty-four. They are all disqualified due to administrative deficiencies and statutory prohibitions.
Christie, I think, uh, my understanding is some of them were just did not turn in, uh, all the, all the information necessary, or all the information that was requested on the RFQ, or RFP. And what needs to happen move, moving forward. One, we had to eliminate, like you said, for statutory reasons. The other two just needed either insurance information or a start time. Can we, uh, would it be appropriate to ask that, that you contact those other two and see if you can get that information? And due to, due to time restraints, possibly go with the one that has the, the, the best price and the quickest start time.
You can direct the town manager to do that. The next part of the action, if you wanted to go with the most responsive bid, with the stipulation that they supply that documentation, would be that, uh, the board needs to consider that currently seven ninety-six is a water asset. And we've talked about this before. You're appropriating expenses from B Part. When your revenues come back in, if you move forward with the second part of this, since it's a water asset, those revenues are gonna have to go to water. Because the revenues have to go to the fund that the asset's located in. So, the, on, the cleanest way to do it would be for water to pay for the repairs, which means you're gonna have to have a, a budget amendment, but...
I, I was gonna say, the answer to your question is yes, but you gotta figure the money out on, on actually how to do it. That's... To, at the, at the risk of being repetitive, we've looked at the, the B Part funds to see where they might be sourced from within an existing resource. And I believe that we've figured that out, except for about seventeen thousand dollars. But it still doesn't get around the accounting challenges, because that, that building, it, it would be okay to spend B Part money on that facility, cause the law allows for it. But from a, an accounting standpoint, that's a water asset, and when any of the revenues would come back in, it, it's going to, uh, create issues for how, where that, where those revenues would go. Since it's a water asset, B Part pays for the, pays for the repairs, but if it's rented out, and the revenues that come in, it would stand a reason and accounting stratification that that money has to go back to the water fund, because that's where the asset is. So, at, at some point in time, um, the issue on that building being a water asset versus a recreation asset has to be reconciled. It's a, it's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar question, cause that's how much the water, the water department paid for it. And there's a note for that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's outstanding on it. And that note is part of the debt service that's paid annually, and is part of the calculation that's made for the, um, for determining the sewer capital fee. Cause it, it's the same, that building is treated just the same as a lift station over there, for accounting purposes. So, it, it's an issue that's gotta be, that's gotta be, um, uh, come to grips with.
What's the procedure for doing that, David?
Well, if, if the procedure would be that the B Part fund would need to purchase the, um, property from, in effect, the water fund. That would, that would, that would be...
If we had money right now.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, that's the, that, that would be the, that would be the, the straightforward. Um, and then we've had discussions about, well, it would just remain a water asset, and the revenues would go into the, the water fund. But then, uh, to keep it clean, the money for the repairs should come from the water fund.
So, you guys would just have a budget amendment before you at the thirteenth meeting to make the repairs come from water? And then if you're deciding that you're renting it, the revenues would go back into water, and it would make it cleaner?
Well, that would be fine.
Well, I just, I just wanna make sure that we have, have everything right and stat in the right, the right manner.
Can we?
I think you need to address the rest of this, the revenue situation and everything before you...
Well, the revenue situation is one, one part of it. However, it doesn't matter, the revenue part of it, we, as a town, cannot have a structure that looks like that and is, is unsafe. So, you know, we go, going forward, there'll have to be some more decisions made. But as far as getting the house repaired and usable, uh, I think is be, we step number one.
Ken? I'm gonna ask a question, cause I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just straight up. So, if an air conditioner goes out on Town Hall right back here, we don't necessarily let it out for bids? Is that right? We just, you call somebody and you have it fixed?
That's correct. Normally, we use the micro purchase, uh, and, and, um, procedure, which is for under ten thousand dollars and do a direct purchase. But we normally will get a couple of informal verbal quotes on that.
So, with that being said, and that's a town asset, and the same, I would look at it like Town Hall. Could we get a couple informal bids from painters, a couple informal bids from HVAC contractors, a couple eight, uh, a couple informal bids from just, um, repair contractors on the island licensed or unlicensed? Because it's gonna be below a threshold of having to have a license, I would think, for the amount of work. Could you do that without another RFP?
Well, the, the, the reason for bundling this stuff together was to go ahead and get it done all at one time, and that if you start breaking things out, um, the, the, uh, it's not explicit in the contracting law, but it's my belief that splitting things out to avoid cracking thresholds on the bidding requirements is not good. In other words, we have, we got a bundle of work that needs to be done, and collectively, it meets the threshold on the informal bid process. And, um, if we start, uh, parsing that out, that is, that is probably not, um, not the best optics for the public.
I concur, cause we've already bid it once. If, if we hadn't gone into that process, maybe, but it's considered bundling, and there could be question called to it. And just as you guys are talking through this, for, I think heads went up and down about a budget amendment for water, so that the expenses are in water. But for the public's sake, because some numbers were being thrown out, the seventeen thousand dollar number that David called out was if we were staying in B Part, and we were just doing an adjustment from existing funds. You see the range from here, we're looking at, your budget amendment that's gonna come before you for water is gonna be in the forty-eight thousand dollar range, just so everybody's clear on the number that they're gonna see the next time.
So, can we, uh, ask you to, to work with the, the bidders at this point? And then bring something back to us on the thirteenth that we can look at as far as making a, an amendment from where we budget the, where we get the money to pay for it?
Yes, sir, you, um, and if, if that's the direction that the board wants to go in, in order to streamline the process, uh, it would probably, uh, be most expeditious to, say, get with what appears to be the most responsive bidder, get the paperwork squared away, and make a ward contingent on a budget amendment that the board would make at the March the thirteenth meeting.
Yes, sir.
You know, our regular board meeting is the fourteenth, I don't know if you...
Why did I say the thirteenth?
Well, no, we have a special meeting the thirteenth. I didn't know if you wanted to keep adding stuff to the thirteenth, or if you wanna go a day later to our regular... Completely up to the board, I just wanted to let you know, it's only the day that...
Any of those that we've said were the thirteenth.
For thirteenth or the fourteenth, I don't think that day will make any difference. So, if, if we don't wanna overload a special meeting, that's fine, we go to the fourteenth. But do we need to make a motion for such, or do we just need to...
Were you gonna take into consideration the repairs that were mentioned by the management groups that need to be done on the inside of the house?
Yes, we can look at those, but it's not, we can't do that until we get the outside done and get the budget dollars...
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna make a decision on what, what you move forward with, on whether you're gonna be renting the house now, this season? Versus if, looking at some of this management suggestions, I mean, you're looking at spending forty-eight thousand dollars, and we don't know for sure with the rest of this revenues and the stuff that the town staff looked into, that it's gonna be feasible for us to rent it this season. Because you got discrepancy, you got one, you've got one management group that says, oh, the house is perfect, it'd be rented. You got another one that's got a list of this long of repairs that need to be made on the inside of the house. And you've got furniture, wifi, computers, televisions, none of that's been taken into effect of this forty-eight thousand dollars. So, you're voting to spend forty-eight thousand dollars to get a house ready in two months to be rented, and we've still got all these lists of expenses that we still haven't taken into consideration. So, I can't foresee spending forty-eight thousand dollars, and we haven't even ironed out the whole entire plan.
So, we're gonna leave the house looking the way it is?
And I never said we were gonna leave the house looking the way it is. There's a, a number of options for the house, but I don't think rushing to spend forty-eight thousand dollars on something, are we gonna rent the house for a year, are we gonna rent it for five years? I don't see renting a house, spending forty-eight thousand dollars just as a start, when you've got all these other repairs and furniture, and new mat, one place has new mattresses, one place says the mattresses are great, there's such a huge discrepancy. One place says they wouldn't even rent it. So, you've got four or five different things, and it's not like all of them saying one thing. There's this, you going from this spectrum to this spectrum, and I just don't, I'm not comfortable saying, yes, let's spend forty-eight thousand dollars until we've got a plan on what we're actually gonna do. I'm not saying leave the house like it is, no, I've never said that from the beginning.
And, and your spreadsheet on the revenue side is exactly the way they presented it in their packet? So, if it said that was net, that was net, if not, you're getting the gross number and...
We can't, in my opinion, we cannot leave it like it is. We're gonna have to do some minimal work to make it safe, so nobody goes on that property and gets hurt during the summer months. Whether we rent it or we don't rent it, to me, is irrelevant. I think it's an asset. I think if it was my house, or your house, or David's house, or Alan's house, we would paint it and keep it up, and turn the air on, so it doesn't get full of mold and mildew. And I think it's just something that has to be done. To me, renting it or not renting it is completely out of the question. I think minimally, we need to address the condition and the safety that outside of that building. It's irresponsible not to do that. If we're not gonna do that, then we need to look at getting rid of it, or some other, taking it, moving it, taking it down, or whatever. We cannot, we cannot leave that, just disregard it in the, in the town much longer. You know, we, we do have the option to sell, there's many, a lot of options. But if we're not, if we're not gonna sell the town property, which I'm not a proponent of, cause it's hard to come by to start with, then I would at least put a coat of paint on it and fix the air conditioners that are hanging, maybe not replace them if they're still working, let them, let them rock till they won't go anymore. But I mean, we need to make it safe. I'm not trying to make a, a, a new property out of it, but it'll do twofold thing. One, it'll make it look better, and, and the neighbors around it will be satisfied. And two, it will keep the value of that asset where the current value of that asset is, instead of letting it continue to deteriorate. And you let it keep going, you're just gonna have to give the house away if you decided to sell it later on.
Well, I, I agree with that. My concern is rushing into, to do and looking at the rental thing. I think we need, still need to take into consideration the, the plan that we had talking about, the community center. And not necessarily that we go to a community center right now. I think the main issue right now is you've got a public access, and there's no handicap bathrooms down there. We could possibly do that, we talked to the guy last time about staging it, and starting with putting in the bottom some outdoor showers and some handicap accessible bathrooms. And then if that's the case, we're doing, moving forward with doing something with the house to, to make it an improvement. I mean, you've got, this weekend alone, I, i- if I'm not mistaken, the, the porta-johns are only down there in the summer. Is that correct? So, this, this weekend, and every weekend, and every day during the week, that parking lot is full. This weekend, they were parked all down the right-of-way, the sides of the roads, all up and down there. And you tell me where those people are going to the bathroom at? They're going under people's houses, they're going in the showers, and there's no place for anybody down there to go to the bathroom. I don't want a porta-potty in front of my house, I don't think they want a porta-potty to continue down there. I just think the plan that we have, in some way, we could get some handicap bathrooms down there.
If I remember right, Mr. Evans, didn't you discuss that if we're gonna go along those lines, that this converts the property to a commercial property, and then we have a lot of other things? So, we can't kind of blend things and go halfway?
May I ask you a question before you... Am I correct, the town ordinance is allow town facilities in any zoning?
Yeah, that, that's not what gets affected, it, that is true, you could...
You talking about the classification of the structure itself?
I'm talking about, yeah, the town doesn't, doesn't have control over the occupancy classification. That's the building code. And that's what, that's what the reference is too. Now, we, 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 we could, I don't even know if I wanna say this or not, but going on my page said you could, you could do something downstairs and then, uh, isolate the upstairs for renovation later. But you could do something downstairs, but you're, but you trigger that when you do it. In other words, you, 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 you're limiting, you've, you've got to basically go forward with what you're, what we were presented, or something close to that, if you do that. You're, you're, you're basically changing your old game and, and locking yourself in. But you could do that without doing all of that stuff, but that's, that's the drawback. The drawback is that now it hasn't, we have now, uh, changed the occupancy of the structure, and it's no longer residential. It's, it's just that simple. You can't, and there's nothing I can do, the law says what it will become at that point.
We don't have to do every... We don't have to do every aspect of it, in my opinion, but, I mean, coat of paint, guys, come on.
Well, we got, and I, I hate to go forward this, but we got a, you, you have, we do have kind of a situation here. We have, we have a complaint, we have a complaint and we've taken some action on the complaint. But at the same time, we take action on other structures in the town under similar conditions. This one ain't quite to, to the point where we have the others, but it's there. And, you know, I think that we need to think about what we're going to do and when we're going to do it, uh, to the structure itself.
I would, I would disregard the revenue possibilities at this point, but, um, I would minimalize it, but I, I would definitely at least perceive with at least a partial repair of that structure as, as, as we can, at lea.
I, I agree with Paige. We have a big spread in terms of what people are saying they could get. However, at, from another aspect, Mermaid Resort Services has been around for a while. Correct?
No.
Is there some particular reason that you believe that Mermaid Resort Services has provided something that is out of line?
It was, it was high.
Well, it's the, it's the highest number.
Optimistic.
It's, I, not.
Impossible, no.
Would it benefit to have, have a representative from Mermaid Resort Services talk to us? At the next meeting, perhaps they could talk to us?
I'm, I'm sure they would.
As far as the, excuse me.
I'm going to ask a question. It is, is the decision, and it's, you all have a vote, but is the decision to repair or not to repair that building based on the revenue?
No, I believe we need to repair the building.
So that's, can we two-part this? Please? So, I, you, you started with the motions.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with, uh, what we have to do budget-wise to make improvements to seven ninety-six.
I'll second that.
What does that mean?
That we're going to leave the rental part, uh, the income part out at this point until we can gather more information.
Just to revisit the two.
And, and I'm all, I'm going to interpret that as the, the, the responses, the word would be done in accordance with the responses from the RFP that we put out.
Correct, sir, there was just some missing information.
Right.
If there's something you, you guys, Tim, and if you guys feel like we can leave out of that RFP that wouldn't affect or might not be necessary at this time, then maybe we could reduce those costs a little bit. But us, a coat of paint and, uh, a couple, definitely the AC rack and the, the handrails and that, the steps are going to kill somebody. And it, that needs to be addressed, whether it turns into a commercial building or it stays residential or sold or anything otherwise. You couldn't give me one reason that that stuff wouldn't need to be addressed, so.
I agree, Brian.
Paint's got to go on a commercial building just like it has a house. Air conditioner's got to go on a commercial building just like it has a house. It's not going to be wasted money. Either way, it ends up happening. Um, granted, maybe a set of steps might be in the wrong place, but that's not that big of an expense. I'd rather see them, see them taken up than left like they are. You could take a set up and leave one set and you'd still be good. So you don't have to do two sets.
But you did say we install a new air conditioning unit that cannot be used only for residential.
Yeah, I would, I, I, I'm a, we were talking about installing that and replacing that because of its condition. And, and I think that's where we were at. Now, I don't know, I don't, I, whether that needs to be replaced now, depending on what y'all plan on doing in the future, um, you know, that could be.
Can we just cover the units?
It's in bad shape.
It's in bad shape, it needs to be replaced.
I mean, I, I don't know what else we could, you got to put steps on it. We got to do something with some portions of the decks, which is, which is major in its safety effects, but minor in, in what we have to do. We need to paint it, uh, obviously. We need to take some of that stuff off that doesn't, that, that's fallen off. Um, and that's the things that we need to do. I would be, I would, I would, I would say this, because the question came up and it seems to be a concern. I would say that if the HVAC were to have a conversation with me, I would tell them to do a load calculation based on what we thought we were going to do in the future, provide us a unit, if, if that's what we needed, that could handle the future and then we're not buying it twice. But it would maybe require some modifications without having to change the work that they do now.
One word of caution, the new codes, if that outside unit doesn't match the air handler unit on the inside, you may have to change the duct system.
Well, that, that's what I was talking about. You're going to have to, the, the, I think that that's part of the quote that we already have because the, the, the system, the duct system that's underneath has got to be replaced. It's actually an issue.
How about on the second floor?
The second floor, the second floor system, I'm not sure what condition that is, but there, the duct work may need to be replaced or may not need to be replaced, depending on if it's been changed since the, the change in refrigerant back in two thousand and six. So if the unit's not older than that, there's a good chance the duct system upstairs already been changed.
Can I add one other thing based on the discussion that's unfolded? Um, I would defer to David on this, but what I would caution the board on at this point is, I think you've had some really good discussion and I know everybody's eager to move forward, but if there's going to be a diminishing of the list that was in the RFQ that's significant, I would think that you may want to consider a rebid to come back before you on the fourteenth because the statute allows for there to be, um, minor irregularities that you, um, overlook and have the more information come in like you were talking about. But if you're looking at crossing things off, you, some of those contractors actually, um, did some things where they did not. So if they got an air conditioning cost, they did not put any of their own labor at cost into the air conditioning. They gave you the bid based on the unit itself. So if there's things you start marking off the list, it could actually change the bidding process.
I'm fine with it like it is.
I'm fine with it like it is.
I, I don't think there was anything in that RFP that doesn't, in my opinion, that should not need to be done. And I've been all over the house, so. It's, it needs to be done. Or so.
Okay, are you ready to move forward here?
We got a motion in a second.
All right, you ready for a question? All in favor, say aye.
Want me to motion again?
To move forward with what we have to do budget-wise to make improvements to seven ninety-six.
That's all right.
The town manager needs to contact the most responsive building to get the irregularities sorted.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just a consensus, I guess.
Run the checklist.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say no. All right, what's next, Ms. Christie?
Do we need the checklist?
Yes, sir, Josh.
I've been watching him, he's, he's moving around.
Okay.
He's just, like me coughing a little bit.
Okay, so included in this year's budget was a site-specific master plan for Selfish Park. Um, the staff sent out an RFQ which was attached in your packet. That we received five proposals back. Those five proposals were ranked by staff and the top three consultants in order of their ranking are listed in your packet. Um, just a reminder to the board that, um, based on feedback from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and needing to capture tourist data, um, when this proposal went out to the consultants, we expressed that we wanted it to occur over two budget years so that they could capture data in the summer. So basically, all of your thirty thousand that you put forward would not be expected to be spent this year. Um, it, there would be some of that would need, would be, that would need to be re-appropriated in the next year's budget. Again, you are just signing off or selecting a consultant based on qualifications and then they would, um, the town manager would contact them and there would be a contract before you from them for a follow-on.
Can we please understand what the results were? How the assessment was done and what the results were?
Yes, so, uh, three staff members conducted the assessment. That was myself, the town manager and, um, the planning director from the Building and Inspections Department. That department has to work with, um, the master plan consultants on the permitting and all of the Kama regulations setbacks, those kinds of things that go on in the park. Um, when the scoring came back, the averages for each of the three that are listed, the top was McGill at ninety-eight, next was Sage at eighty-nine, and third was Bolton and Mink at seventy-five. Everybody else fell lower in that in the ranking. Um, one of the reasons for that is that some of them left out entire sections like approach, how they planned to approach the project. Um, I called all of the, um, references. There were some very good references. There were some references where some folks had been through three project managers and that's just not something we can do with the amount of stuff that we have going on. So that played into your past performance category and your technical expertise. I can tell you that the, um, there's comments here for each one of them, but specific to the number one recommendation benefits, um, significantly tailored in the area of Partif, which would be what you possibly would be pursuing for grant funding, um, and permitting their staff that they have in their packet that's listed. Um, one of their consultants is Luann Bryant. She was the Partif representative for the park across the street before she went to work for them. Nate touched every Partif application in the state and one of the other coastal grant programs for a long time before he went and he is now a consultant for them. Um, and Debbie Wilkson was formerly with Kama and she is their, um, representative as a consultant for anything that has to do with permitting. So they have very solid expertise in the ranking for their staff. Um, they had many similar coastal projects that were listed. If you look, there was a ton of stuff relevant to Brunswick County. Um, they have secured seven and a half million in Partif grant funds in the last ten years. Ten of those were coastal projects for grant funds. Um, limitations for them, um, in the, and the Parks and Rec Board did express this before, this was not a part of this proposal, so it didn't show up in this proposal. Don't get me wrong. With the overall master plan they did for us, there was some QC issues where some things came back that needed some editing. So that would be something that we definitely want to, they were aware of that discussion from before. That was the only thing that came up from past performance. And all of their, uh, references said they were very happy and that they had an awesome working relationship with them. Anything else?
No, may I ask that, can we do something like this again? Can you put the assessment sheet into the packet? Because it does help us as we go through it to understand how things get decided. Thank you.
Do we need to, to move forward on this? Do we need to make a motion for you to, to carry on with the project and to, uh, work on giving some grants for it?
You would need to make a motion that the town manager contact the consultant that you're choosing to, um, have a contract come back before you.
And I'd like to make a motion for the town manager to, uh, to, to get with the McGill company and get a contract proposal back to us, hopefully by our next meeting.
Just a second.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say no, unanimous.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, good job. Give us some grand money.
Okay, Ms. Clemens? We're on number eighteen.
As directed by the Board of Management, staffs listed qualifications from engineering firm for stormwater management and consulting services. Submission deadline was January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Town receives signature bonuses through RFQ, McGill and Associates, Weathers and Rabinal, WK Dixon and Company, Geo-Sintec, GTI, and the Wooten Company. Two through seven, which are included, are included for your to review. Staff to review the submissions for performance to RFQ. The spots, the responses submitted were in compliance with the execution of the Wooten Company. There's a misprint there, which it says they didn't have a certificate of insurance, exact certificate of assistance. It's, uh, basically stating that they're an engineering firm, you know, good standing. But looking at the information, I really feel like that, that they are and they just maybe it was oversight on their part. In accordance with federal uniform guidance, staff prepared a ranking sheet, attached the date of the board dues. If the board makes a selection of a firm, they can direct the staff to bring back the contract back with consideration. And we can also see attachment one, so, attachment one.
Well, again, Chris, I've, I've, I've had the pleasure of speaking with you, asking a, a little bit about this and, um, you know, this, the firms that are, that have turned in their RFQs, is there some firms that you think would be a, a better fit for our town versus another? Or is that a subject that he can't read?
I did the ranking. I mean, have we all done the ranking?
Yep.
Yes. But I'd like a little input from Chris as to what, what he would think I would think would help.
Per Ms. Clemens?
I, I guess I'm okay to speak to that. I looked at the raw level and I spent a pretty good bit of time and I'll have to say they're all pretty impressive. Personally, um, had projects in the past. I feel like McGill and Associates, I, I kind of like them. One reason I say that, they've got a, they've actually done stormwater service in Larkor fifty-five and resolved those issues with them. Uh, Point West, they were part of that. I think that went well and I think we've had a good working relationship with them through the years. I know this don't have anything to do with, uh, stormwater, but also they were kind of lead off on their, getting started on their sewer, uh, system. You know, start doing that study and what it takes, getting where it is. But that's just, you know, my personal experience, uh, personal experience. I've got a good habit of getting tongue tied up here and not coming out right, but, uh, and I will say I've had the pleasure of being in class for about thirteen hours today, what I've done with the Kama all day, so. That chair is getting kind of hard.
Ms. Clemens, do you want to say anything?
Well, I mean, I actually, everybody had something good. I, I had done quite a bit of research over several months on a number of these firms. I actually have two firms that really stand out to me that, you know, are, are close enough that I, with, with something this important, I just wonder if we should discuss maybe picking the top couple and interviewing them, actually having them come in and talk to them. I mean, that's always an option for us. This is, this is going to be a long-term thing.
There was another thing that I thought they would mention. I'm not trying to butt in or sway you in any way. It pretty much was pretty important to me too that I knew that they had a. It pretty much was pretty important to me too that I knew that they had a, somebody close by. It would be probably pretty easy to communicate with rather than having somebody that was out of town. Given my two sneaks.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Much pleasure, Commissioners.
We had a ranking, so I guess one of the things that's typically done is, is scoring. You know, if, if I did this right and six was the best one, then the highest score wins, right?
Correct. Yeah, everybody should just have like one-one, one-two, one-three for each.
So you should have a number of points.
Six is the hot.
Six is the hot.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, 'cause I actually did it backwards and had to redo it.
'Cause usually number one is.
I usually say number one is best, so.
It was late when I was reading this.
I had to, I had to undo it. So we should all have numbers calculated for the firms.
I do agree with Pat, though, on the getting the top two in here and actually sitting face-to-face with them. Because stormwater on the island has always been a tremendous and hard-to-solve problem. Um, and it's very important that we feel confident with whoever's selected. So I, I would, if we scored the top two, we get them in here.
I don't, I don't mind if it's two or three, if there's, if people feel that there's three. I came up with two lumped that clearly stood up, but maybe other people have three that are. But right now, it's just, what are the top picks?
Um, Daniel has a spreadsheet ready to input your guys' data if you would like to, or please, if you guys.
Totally agree with what I'm saying.
Thank you. And if he wants to do one, he can, he just, he knows he was doing it, and he's ready to move on if you guys want to, come back to it.
You wanna move on? Commissioners have some. All right, we're going to nineteen, is that right? About the audit?
Right.
Oh, that's, Ms. Pat, that's you then.
Yes. Um, the audit committee met, um, on the thirteenth of February, and we reviewed the two firms that had applied for, um, that had responded to the request for, um, for a, um, request for proposal, um, for the external audit of the town's finances for the following three years. The two firms that were evaluated were Martin Starnes and Associates, uh, the firm that has done our, our audits the last three years. The other was Sharp Patel CPA. Um, the qualifications that were provided were measured using the scoring tool that was developed by a previous audit committee. The results are in the packet. Based upon the scoring tool evaluations, the audit committee recommends that the BOC authorize the town manager to contract with Sharp Patel CPA. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
I wanted to, uh, bring up, in the audit committee meeting, members of the committee expressed their concern about the, uh, litigation between Sharp Patel and Rives Associates. So I was able to find the actual court filing from July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. And, um, I've got that printed out. If you wish to look over it.
I have read it.
Okay.
I, I think that, we discussed it in the committee as well to some extent, but yes. There is an argument between the previous firm that Sharp Patel worked for about them taking clients when they formed their own firm. And there is a monetary, there's supposed to be a monetary agreement, and there will be a payment that is due, that they are supposed to give a certain percent of their profits for their first two years to the previous firm. So I think it ends twenty twenty-two. It is an argument. It has been a litigation. As I recall, when I read it and went back, in the earliest iterations of the discussions, which I think there was a mediation, um, they had to write some sort of an agreement that they would be liable up to a certain sum of money, and they did commit to that. Um, I don't think they're arguing about that commitment. They're arguing about the actual amount of money. It's, um, when we discussed that, I think in the end, we decided that that was not gonna be a distraction. Um, called, I did call, I did call different references. They were all very pleased with the firm, with the quality of their work, the timeliness, their professionalism. So at this point, um, this ongoing argument about the money, we did not feel was going to keep them from doing their job. And that, that I think was the consensus of the committee.
Yeah, I just didn't know because just the full details weren't really completely discussed, I felt like. But what you just said is basically what the case is.
Mm-hmm.
So it's still in litigation?
They are in argument about exactly how much money they owe the previous firm.
Well, what made them, I mean, we've been using Martin Starnes for years, and they've done a, a, a good job. Why was, what, what made the other one stand out so much?
Well, Mark, if you look at the scoring.
I did.
Okay. Martin Starnes, and, and this, this was raised by one of the audit committee members and then discussed. Uh, the cost of the audit that they're proposing for this next year is sixty percent higher than what we paid this year. And it is a significant difference in the cost of the audit compared to Sharp Patel. And our evaluation of the people who would be involved in the audit for each firm, the qualifications of each team were equal. So there was no difference in qualifications of the two companies, of the two firms, the people that would be doing the audit. There was no hesitancy about the quality of their work and the timeliness. And a lot of it came down to the clear description of the cost estimate that was provided by Patel, Sharp and Patel, because they were very precise. And Martin Starnes just basically gave a number. And that number is sixty percent higher than what our audit cost this past year. And it was considered that this was rather excessive and without having reservations about the quality of the work and the, um, qualifications of the people at Sharp Patel. It was decided to go to Sharp Patel, to recommend to Sharp Patel.
I know, and I have some companies that do a lot of bidding, and we often get underbid. And then, then the company that won the bid comes back with all these add-ons. What kind of guarantee or protection would the town have that they wouldn't?
Neither company, neither firm gave a guarantee, but I did specifically ask the references that I contacted for Sharp Patel, had their estimates of what they were going to charge for audits been accurate? And the answers I got were yes. And one town, uh, finance director who, well, ex-finance director who became the town manager said she did not believe they had ever exceeded, she did not recall, and they'd been working with them for quite a few years, they had ever exceeded their estimate.
But what kind, what in the contract?
Neither one of them gave a guarantee.
But with that much difference scares me.
Well, what, what is unclear is the Martin Starnes increase between this past year and what they are now saying they will charge. It is a big difference for essentially the same product. So.
The being on time, I believe, with the legislation just being in, it's being worked on now, that, uh, being late on an audit is, is gonna be detrimental to our.
Never been, according to, according to the references I contacted, their timing is was excellent.
I, when they were our auditor, Rives was late, and Jay Patel, Jay Sharp was the program manager. They were late.
I'm aware of that. We discussed that as well. And our discussion, a lot of it, did cover what was going on at Rives at the time, which was probably a distraction that didn't help the situation. This is not Rives. This is a new firm.
I, I, I'd like to add in that, although, Commissioner Kwiatkowski, you did, you did check the references of, of, um, of those firms. You didn't ask, um, a reference of Martin Starnes, of me. Um, and I'm, at that particular time, in my role as the secretary to the audit committee, kinda constrained in, um, and shared my opinion on, uh, the, 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 um, the firms at that time. As, as I sit here tonight, as the manager to the board, I, I've got some concerns about, um, Sharp Patel. Um, and I, and I will readily admit to some, probably some bias um, on the experiences that the staff encountered with them, uh, five, four, and three years ago. Um, there were, um, a lot of turmoil involved in those times. My concern now is the fact that Martin Starnes has been on time with their audits, significantly on time. And we were late with those, with, if not one, but two of those audits with.
It was one.
Okay. There were, um, consistent redos from the staff's perspective on resubmittals of work, um, to Sharp Patel.
It was not Sharp Patel.
Excuse me.
It was not this firm.
Excuse me. It would, the, the principal, the program manager, was Jay Sharp, who is, it's this, this company that's put the, the bid in is him. And at this point in time, with all of the money that's involved here, especially the federal single audits, um, that we have plowed through with Martin Starnes and developed an understanding of our systems, our funds, the mechanics of our large-scale federal project. I, I do not relish the thought of having to repeat those efforts and dialogue with a firm whose principles are mainly just experienced with school boards, with school funding. Um, not that school budgets aren't complex, and not that they don't use federal money. Um, but I, I have been impressed, especially the last two years, with automation um, that Martin Starnes has implemented. And, um, I feel that changing the auditor at this time is something akin to going down the back stretch, and you're ahead in the Kentucky Derby, and you want to swap horses out from under the jockey. And it is, it is, um, I, I.
I can't say I didn't expect that this would happen, but we did discuss quite a bit at the meeting about automation.
I haven't finished.
That's fine.
Um, and so, you know, it's, it's my rec- recommendation that you not change your auditor um, and that you entertain a, a contract for them. Now, the auditor works directly for the board, but it's that fellow right there and this one and Margaret that are gonna have to pay the price of what I think may be, um, an underestimation of exactly what the work is that is gonna be involved in preparing the audit and to get it done in a, in a timely manner. And based on everything that I know that we have coming, um, I just don't relish, um, having to educate a new auditor at this time. Now I'm finished.
The board does not have to take the audit committee's recommendation. Let me be clear on that. But our audit committee is staffed with highly qualified people in accounting and understanding of audits and what goes into them. There was, again, a discussion about qualifications. There was a discussion about how things have moved on in terms of automation and that basically all qualified firms have a high level of understanding and competency in automation and working together for building systems and getting data into systems. I am sorry that there are not members of the audit committee here who can better express what the discussion was. Again, you do not have to take the recommendation of the audit committee, but we did do a thorough discussion, and as I said, I was expecting something like this tonight.
You, uh, you don't think that the litigation would be a distraction for them?
No, I don't. It's, it's been, it's been in their background for, since they split off. Okay? I, a distraction for them, it's litigation that will get resolved, and it will be money. Now, again, we discussed that. We discussed it. But, but you don't have to take the audit committee's recommendation. You are, you are going to be talking about probably forty to forty-five thousand dollars over a three-year period. Okay? You're talking about audits that have been running in the twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar a year, and now year one, it's forty thousand. It's in the information that was in the packet. Martin Starnes is an excellent firm. I think they are probably the top firm in the state. One of the members of the audit committee did actually say, you, you do sometimes wonder if we need the highest of the high power to do the work for our small municipality. You have a big firm, you have a small firm. You have a well-established firm, you have a new firm with highly qualified people. You have, again, references that discuss the professionalism and timeliness, good working relationships. We know what Martin Starnes is. I don't have anything negative to say about them. Okay? But I don't know how they came up with forty thousand dollars, because they did not split it out, and Sharp Patel did.
So there was about a ten thousand dollar per year difference?
Thirteen thousand, thirteen thousand dollar difference this year. And again, we were surprised that, that Martin Starnes went up sixty percent. That, that actually raised a couple of the audit committee's, uh, members' eyebrows when they did the calculation. It's a big, big jump.
Can we ask Daniel for his input? Would you, gonna be taking on the?
Um, I mean, I'm a, I guess I'm a creature of habit. I'm used to Martin Starnes the past two years. I'm comfortable with them. That doesn't mean that Sharp Patel can't do the job and won't do the job good, but we do have a good working relationship with Martin Starnes.
I'm gonna say those of us that have been here through the years that, that the audit proved to be a major problem for the town, and, uh, we, whatever the commissioner decide, we don't want to go back to those years where we sat in these chambers and took a beating from the audience and took a lot of turmoil with amounts of commissioners, so, you know.
I, I, if I may just remind everybody, I think that a large part of the turmoil was frankly due to a couple commissioners specifically that, okay. You remember, I remember.
Yeah.
I, I'm not as convinced it was, it was the people involved from the audit firm, again, as some turmoil going on at the bigger company, but also a couple members of, of board of commissioners that truly did not make things. that truly did not make things easy. And we don't have that anymore.
I just, with Daniel taking on a big position, new role, he's been great at what he's doing, but this is a big step, I, I think. Just want him to be comfortable stepping into his new role.
Just being his first of, uh, first of the three, I think, year contract. Again, his comfort level is important to make sure that we get through the, the process smoothly. And so, again, if something was broken, then we would need to fix it. But at this point, I don't see that there was any, as you said, they were good companies.
They're both good companies. The qualifications of both are good.
And the difference was the price.
The, when you say the price, it's also a clear delineation of how the cost was arrived at, which was provided by, by Sharp-Petel and was not by Martin Starnes. They simply gave a number.
Does it work contacting them to ask them to honor such a huge difference?
What's the dead mountain of this decision, Mr. Hewitt?
Well, I can tell you there's not a lot of auditors out there doing government work. And we need, we needed to have started the audit yesterday. There's, I mean, we had two responses to, to the solicitation.
Looking at the legislation that I looked at, the, you know, the NC League of municipalities, that they stated that that was a problem and that's why they wanted to, to get a billion to make sure that everybody got them done on time. I think it's important we, we can't be like, like it as easy on Daniel as we can.
Ever. Ever.
My motion would be to accept the Audit Committee's recommendation.
That's a motion?
That's my motion, okay? Again, you don't have to, but that is my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Hearing none. Is there another motion? While we're, Chair declares a five-minute recess. All right, anybody wanna pick it up and run with it some more?
Hold on. Yes, sir. With my, with my thoughts on the, uh, Sharp-Petel being in the, in the, in the litigation and them having a, having to pay a percentage of their profits and then still coming in at a lower price gives me, uh, gives me cause for concern. So, so with that, I'd like to make a motion that we continue on with Martin Starnes as a-
Don't we have a motion? No, it died. I'm sorry, you're in order. Go ahead.
For Martin Starnes to continue working with our town to make sure we get our audits in a timely manner and work with Daniel, being that he's, uh, just been put into a new financial position.
Looking for a second.
Second.
All right. Motion second. Discussion of the motion. Discussion of the motion. Hearing none. Are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Madam Clerk, it's four to one. Miss Pat. Opposition?
I have your tabula from Daniel Gieser that I don't know if you want to do one, two, or three, but McGill was top, second, and third.
Okay.
Where's the important, so I don't-
Okay, tabulations have been made that McGill was the top vote getter. Anything else needs to be said or done on this, Mr. Hewitt?
Just that, um, y'all had asked, I'm sorry, y'all had asked-
The top two.
What, to, to interview.
Okay, you're the top two. Wither and Ravenel is number two. Okay.
I recommend, this is, I recommend we bring the top, if, if the top three are all clustered, I don't know what the differences are.
Well, I, you know what?
He printed it for everybody, I'm sorry.
The way, the way- That, that question on interviewing top two firms got by me. The Mini Brooks Act says that a selection is to be made for the most qualified firm and then if there's not an acceptable price to be arrived at, you go to the next qualified firm, the next qualified firm. And since you had set forth the request for qualifications based on what went out and you didn't, you didn't announce that that's what you intended to do, I, I don't think that's according to Hoyle, that you have to, um, you have to acquire a, uh, a, a contract proposal from McGill and then if that's not acceptable, you disqualify them and go to the next in line.
What's your pleasure, Commissioners?
If that's not an option, it's not an option. That's... So, I don't know.
It looks like it's a pretty clear choice and that's the one that, uh-
It's far enough apart that-
But I think that's what, as Chris alluded to, that's someone he can, uh, local contact and, and stay close with us and knows, uh, knows our town pretty well.
Help me out here. Do I have a motion?
No.
I'm sure we'd like to have one. You don't have to make one.
Well, we need to go forward.
So make forward with the contract. Make a motion, make forward with the contract.
Make a motion what?
Oh, wait, I'm in the wrong thing. I'm trying to figure out where we're at.
Eighteen. Number eighteen, storm water management.
So we've, are we gonna interview anybody or are we just gonna go with the, the top choice?
You can't.
He said we couldn't. Said we're not.
You can't. The, the Mini Brooks Act sets forth-
Move forward with you.
Somebody needs to make a more, a motion before I-
Well, then I make a motion that we move forward with McGill and Caffney on the, the storm water management project.
Okay. Are you the maker?
Yes.
All right. Rick Smith's the maker, second person.
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, the judge, second. Further discussion, anyone? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Four to one, Madam Clerk. Miss Pat, object. All right, are we on number twenty? Okay. Chief Dixon?
During the December twenty-two meeting, I think it was, we discussed the discharge of firearms, or the discharge of a firearms ordinance and discovered that a lot of the language was dated and it also provided an exception for the Chief of Police to give special permission to discharge firearms. So, went through and looked at that, spoke to the attorney, basically came up with a much simpler definition. It's easier to read, easier to understand, gets rid of a lot of those exceptions. And basically, it shall be unlawful to discharge any firearm or air gun as defined by the U.S. Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms and Explosives within the town limits, except in the defense of life or property by a law enforcement officer, animal control officer, or member of the armed services while acting in the performance of their duties or during historic ceremonies or commemoration functions or for such purposes that, provided that no live ammunition should be used or discharged or when executing a state depredation permit issued by North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission or licensed wildlife control agent, consistent with any restrictions imposed. And if you have any questions on those four clauses or exceptions, we can go through them. I did notice one thing in doing this, and, and it was my typo, and I, I wish I'd have called it before I did it, but I actually put firearm and air gun backwards. It should, it should read any air gun or firearm as defined by ATF, basically. So I, I flip-flopped those two and did not catch it. My apologies. So that would, that would be my only recommended change on this. But that's, that's what I've got for you. Questions, comments, or concerns?
Chief Dixon, is, uh, air gun is, uh, is what you're considering a BB gun?
Yeah, basically-
CO2 pistol or anything like that?
Correct, anything. So the, the definition of a firearm without going through the entire ATF thing is basically, it, it's an explosive, if it, it's got an explosive projectile. And of course, that definition goes on to define all the parts of it. But because an air gun, a BB gun, air pistols, a CO2 pistols, because they're air discharged, there's no explosive, so, so they're not considering that same definition of a firearm. But they would be, by including that air gun statement in here, they would also be included in our ordinance for discharge of a air gun.
Chief, this would, um, impact how these duck hunters and so forth are in our west end marsh down there. This overrides any rights that they may think they have with the wildlife people.
So, yes.
Coming there by boats.
The, the local ordinances still are applicable. And even the local ordinances, or the local ordinance, that's a, the next one down, this one's thirty oh one, the next one, which isn't here, but is thirty point oh two, is the hunting regulations. Both of those are still applicable, even though state law says they can hunt. If they're doing it, wildlife may not come issue them a state ticket because they haven't issued, because they haven't violated a state law. But we as Holden Beach could still go issue them a town ticket because they have violated a local ordinance.
My only other question, Chief, is, is, is this, what about a discharge from a vessel in the waterway? Is that, would that also be included? Again, I know how sometimes the duck hunters are, they'll, they could be far enough off.
Right. If, it's, it's my understanding of our, our waterway and our, our lines, when you come across halfway, the waterway is the town, so this side halfway.
I'll, I'll speak to the city limits. The city limits, uh, although it's a common thought that the city limits go halfway of the waterway, that's not the case. The, the charter defines the city limits as the high tide mark around the island. So if somebody's in a boat in the, in the middle of the waterway, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, that they're not in the, they're not in the city limits. The meets and bounds in the charter talk about the high tide line of the, of the island.
I'd have to look at it again. My memory's not very used to it.
Although it is vague when you get down close to the inlet.
I have a question. In defense of life or property?
Yes.
We're having a lot of movement of coyotes.
Yes.
And so pets are considered property?
I would also consider them life.
Right. But in the case, they're generally property.
Yes. If you, if you needed to dispatch a coyote in the defense of your life or your cat's life or your dog's life, if it was an imminent danger and we get down there, we're not gonna write you a discharge of a firearms ordinance ticket for, for that situation, you know? We're, we're gonna play it year by year for each one, but-
There's four or five in this bill, in the dredging area right now.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, we, we would take all those, and that's, that's why that's in there. I mean, we don't-
Is there anything with the wildlife resources that's taken into consideration that the population of coyotes is getting?
That's, that is part of those state depredation permits. If you're not in imminent danger, but you need to get rid of coyotes, you can contact the Wildlife Resources Commission. And they do depredation permits. Again, that's, that's their area of expertise. I don't know all the rules behind those. But if they issue a depredation permit that says a coyote, a raccoon, a, you know, a possum, whatever it is that's supposed to be removed from the island, they have trapping regulations, they have, you know, killing regu, they have a lot of regulations to it. But if they bring a permit that says it's supposed to be killed on this day, this time, and you follow those regulations, then, then we would honor that permit as well.
Chair's looking for a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-three oh three as amended with the one correction that the chief said he would put in place reversing air gun and firearm.
Need a second?
Sir.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimously, Carrie.
Thanks, Chief Dixon.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir. This budget ordinance amendment recognizes the receipt of revenues derived from the sale of two excess vehicles and re-appropriates that money into the water fund capital outlay vehicles line. That's going to be added to the money that, from a prior vehicle sale that'll allow Chris to buy one vehicle, is the plan.
Does this impact future sales of police trucks or anything like that?
No, this is, we've already sold these two and this is just putting the money into the budget.
Is there a motion? Anybody? Housekeeping, is there a motion? All right, Brian May.
I'll second.
Rick, second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Just carried unanimously. Public comments? Anybody in the room wish to speak about anything you want to speak? Going once, twice? We're gone. Town managers support, Mr. Hewitt?
The only thing that I have tonight is to, uh, repeat what Mr. Evans said about the Coastal Resources Commission convening in Ocean Isle Beach on Thursday. The Coastal Resources Advisory Council meets Wednesday midday. Again, there are several items of relevance to Holden Beach that are on that agenda. Inlet hazard areas, discussions on beach mats, what makes the establishment of the vegetation line be considered stable, and also some experimental projects involving using straw bales for fencing that Ocean Isle Beach is requesting. There are some other things. And I would encourage, encourage anybody, if you're so inclined to see how the Coastal Resource Commission works, you got a real good opportunity to see that on Thursday over at their town hall, which is right on the causeway just before you go up the bridge. Lastly, the only other thing I have is that we have issued the service request for the delineation of the eight hundred block, I'm sorry, of the park horse properties. That's out and it'll take, you know, as, as long as it takes to come back. So we got that out on the street.
Any questions? Or, Mr. Hewitt?
David, that meeting, you think that everybody can attend? That is Thursday?
Yes, sir. That's, I believe it starts at nine o'clock and is scheduled for all day long. The agenda is online at NCCRC and they've got a, a meetings, uh, agenda listing there. And you can see if, you know, if you're not interested in hay bales, you know, you can pick your time to go at what, whatever. But I'm anticipating that that is, the inlet hazard area is going to get a lot of attention. I understand from the Brunswick County Commissioners Meeting last night, there was a lot of discussion and public comment concerning that. So space may be limited in that timeframe.
Okay. David, are you, you're planning to attend?
Yes, sir.
Will, is there someone you can come back and give us a cliff note? Is there some way you can come back and give us a Cliff Notes version of what was discussed at our next meeting, please?
What we'll probably do is that Mr. Evans is going to also attend, and we can actually have him give a better report than I would be able to, because he's been intimately involved in specifically that inlet hazard area from the get-go, and, you know, the town's on record, going back three years is what its position is, and is really close to the static vegetation lines and all those technical matters.
A report on such at the March fourteenth meeting would be greatly appreciated.
Okay. Mayor's report's real brief in this late hour. Hope everybody has a good evening when we finish this meeting. Next, Rick, you got a report?
Yes, sir, it's going to be a quick one, too. And I want to, first of all, thank all the people that came in tonight that are listening online. We do appreciate their input. I appreciate the emails that we received this week. They are taken into account, and we do appreciate them being, taking their time to give us some information. And I want to thank the staff for helping me get the particulars for tonight's meeting. It was a whole lot of stuff. Yes, we had just about an encyclopedia here of reading to do, and it was nice to be able to, David let me talk to the staff to get some insight, not inside information, but to get some perspectives on the best ways to move forward. Thank you, sir.
Brian?
I want to thank everybody that came to join us tonight, and those of you that are listening. I saw a few trees blooming today, so, and some daffodils popping up, so I'm ready for this winter time gloom and doom to be over with. It's warming up, I see the beaches crowded, and I'm glad to see everybody out and about, and we've had some nice weather lately, so I'm not going to knock. Michael, congratulations. You got a couple of big projects there, and we appreciate your effort, and I hope you give the town a lot of consideration when you, these are really important things, so we appreciate your effort on that. And as always, we appreciate the staff's input and direction, and wish everybody just have a good evening.
Dr. Dyer?
I just want to thank everyone for coming. It's been a long evening. I think we got a lot accomplished from working together. Thank the staff for all their hard work, and everybody have a good night.
Ms. Pat?
Last time I mentioned that I was hoping we would see everybody at the budget meetings. I just want to remind people that we were supposed to have our first budget meeting this week. We were going to discuss objectives, but that date has been moved to March thirteenth, so if you have it on your calendar for this week, please move it forward.
Judge Arnold?
We sense your concerns that I didn't go out and have my own demise, but... Detour of what's been said.
All right, thanks, sir. Number twenty-six on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Close session in pursuit of the North Carolina General Statute, one four three eleven A three, consult with the attorney.
Is there a motion? Motion from Brian and...
Second.
Second from Rick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimously approved to go into executive session, thank all of you for being... Okay, is there a motion that we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for being here. We adjourn.